The first thing that I would like to do is welcome you to the board of that meeting. And the second thing that I would like to do is make a motion to Tracy Rogers, the president, to participate by telephone.
We have to open the public meeting first. Your role call and have the board approve his acceptance as a virtual attendee.
Role calling?
Do you want to read the opening statement this last?
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 1046, Public Law 1975, C231, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice at this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to be extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the NIB coaster. January 3rd, 2025, the email copies of this notice have also been placed in the administration building, bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city court on January 3rd, 2025. The mission of the Asbury Park School District is to provide all students with comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Role call.
Ms. Ackerman?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Willoughby?
Here.
Ms. LaRaca?
Here.
Ms. Litzinski?
Here.
Ms. Tannen?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Rogers to attend virtually the public meeting.
Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. LaRaca? Ms. Litzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Tannen?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Now we're going to have presentations. Principals, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
What's that? Don't be talking about it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. It's Hall of Eleven. Appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to call up Thurgood Marshall. He's the key of the work.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Willoughby. I'm the building principal at Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, and I would like to take the time to recognize my April Student of the Month, Tamaya Younger. Can you come forward, please? Tamaya Younger is a great student who has always worked so hard this year and has shown great growth. She is such a pleasure to have in class, and she is always asking to help out with various classroom tasks. For example, she led today's pledge of allegiance in the singing of Star Spangled Banner, Dornall Spring Concert. She is always kind to everyone and only has nice things to say about everyone. Congratulations, Tamaya, and I'll see you next week at our Sunday party. Daddy, come forward. Anybody else taking Tamaya? Congratulations again. I would like to recognize Thurgood Marshall, Staff of the Month for the month of April. Her name is Donna McCarra, and I'm going to ask Ms. Jane if you should come forward, please. Donna is an all-around team player. She is easy to get along with. The students and the parents love her. Mrs. Philhauer and I love her as well. There isn't one occasion that Mrs. McCarra hasn't risen to, whether it's dressing to the nines for the Easter Bunny Parade, or making soup jambu for her students for our Hason Flag Day celebration, or coordinating our autism acceptance activities and parade. She does wholeheartedly and driven the club. Mrs. McCarra's soft-spoken voice is such a sweet welcome each morning. I'm proud to have her on my staff at Thurgood Marshall Elementary School because she truly is a treasure and an asset. Congratulations, Ms. McCarra. Ms. McCarra's daughter is getting married this weekend, so she could not be here with us. However, her other half of the dynamic duo is here to accept the certificate on her behalf. Thank you. Congratulations to Donna.
And now I'd like to call Dr. Schultz, the new office.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Schultz, the proud principal of the Bradley Elementary. Tonight, we are delighted to honor Students and Staff of the Month for both April and May. We are going to start with our wonderful and dynamic students. For the month of April, we have a sixth-grade young man who it gives me so much pleasure and joy to have him nominated for this award because any staff member who has worked with him throughout his years from preschool all the way up to sixth grade has said consistently throughout this year how much he has grown. The choices that he makes are just so developing and welcoming of a young man, and he's working very hard at his academics and showing sustained growth each marking period. Joined tonight by his lovely grandma. I know she is so proud of him. Mr. Jesus Halong, please come up and accept your award. Grandma, come up too. Come on up, Grandma. Thank you. He really is delightful. We appreciate everything. And now for our May Student of the Month, I am equally as delighted to introduce a fifth grade student who I have had the pleasure of being his principal for a few years now. I have watched him grow and excel academically in our school community and just become again another well-rounded young man. He is specifically being highlighted tonight as a principal's choice, Student of the Month, because not only does he serve on our safety patrol, he has perfect attendance the entire school year. The only thing he was not visited in Bradley Elementary was for Bring Your Child to Work Day, which his mom, Ms. Mohammed, works at Thurgood Marshall, so he was in district after Thurgood Marshall. So without further ado, joined tonight by his wonderful family, Mr. Najah Mohammed-Purvis, please come up and accept your right to win the job award. Yes, family, please come up. Thank you so much. Grace, come up. And now for our long-awaited Staff of the Month. For May and April, Bradley was in a unique situation where we actually had two duos of staff nominated by staff for each month, which I want to shout out because I really think that speaks to the camaraderie and the culture of teamwork and collaboration we have behind the scenes at Bradley. And if you're not with us every day, you may not always see that. So kudos to the staff on being a great team. For April, we had a unanimous vote for two staff members who put so much effort and so much time, love, and dedication into planning our Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month activities. When I say they went above and beyond, that's an understatement. I'm going to highlight just some of the kind things their colleagues said because they deserve to be said out loud. Being a teacher for 24 years, I have never seen something as amazing and hands-on that Lauren and Alyssa did for autism awareness. The hands-on learning that took place to bring real-life experiences to our kids was awesome. Also, seeing a former student who has autism be able to come up and speak in front of the school was so special and heartwarming. I loved it so much. I know that it took so much time, and the month has only just begun. Ms. Schatzman and Ms. Gargilio work so hard and put so much love and effort into their students and what they do, and they have now spread it throughout the building. Thank you for being who you are. So Ms. Schatzman, who is a fantastic teacher in one of our special education classrooms, she holds so much love and care as evident she does. She is joined tonight by her beautiful daughter, and Ms. Gargilio, who is a superstar occupational therapist that just supersued every application. Tough join tonight with her family. Please come up. Families, please come up. Well deserved, ladies. Thank you for all you do. And now for our May Staff of the Month, a duo who puts the dynamic in everything they do. They are the backbone of our school. I would not be able to do anything that gets done each and every day for Bradley Elementary without them. Again, two staff members who are so wonderfully adored amongst our staff and receiving nominations both together and separately each and every month. They are just everything to Bradley. The dedication and support that they put into our students, families, and teachers each day make our school as amazing as it is. Tonight, one of them could not be here, Ms. Felicia, because her glam daughter is being inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. So Ms. LaRonda is holding down the floor and coming up to represent both herself and Ms. Felicia. Truly an institution named Bradley. We love you and appreciate all you do. And she's joined tonight by three principals that she's worked with. And that's all for Bradley. Thank you.
Our first Student of the Month for the month of April is Laura Rose Belzer, and I would like to read her teachers' history that I've read in these presentations for the staff. Laura is respectful, responsible, motivated. She is always polite, considerate towards others, the classmates and teachers included. And always has an overall kind, friendly personality. She is the definition of positivity. Additionally, she participates often in class, always completes her homework. She challenges herself to do better on assignments. And lastly, she is an amazing writer. She has a gift with words and takes every opportunity to express her natural talents. Her social studies teacher wrote, "Laura has a sweet and lovely spirit." She is literally skips down the hall with smiling and singing all the way to class. She is very polite to the staff and always to students. And of course, with administration, she is very kind and so nice and so positive each and every day. Laura is a dedicated student. She tries her best in each and every subject, and her teacher, across the board, says she is a pleasure and a joy to have in class. At this time, we're going to ask our Student of the Month, Laura, to come up and receive your nod. And Ma'am, please, look at the smile that we're talking about right now. Come on. Look at that. Look at that. Look at that. Our Athlete of the Month is Alan Moreno. He, uh, Alan has been playing sports for over three years now. He's dedicated to both his education and his athletics. Alan's passion for being the leader in class on field and off the field has motivated others to achieve. Alan has a number of strengths to offer. He is always interested in supporting others. He's respectful, personable, and he tries his best at each and everything that he does all the time. Throughout the years, he has demonstrated his perseverance and has always put forth his best effort into everything that he's done. Alan is a welcome to our team and at this time, Student Athlete of the Month. Next, we'll go to our May. Our May Student of the Month, Policia Joseph. Policia is a amazing staff. Our staff says she's a amazing young lady to have. She also has a smile that will light up the room this year. She has got into the Dream Star Program and has worked every day very, very hard to be her best self. Her ESO teacher says she's a bilingual student who is excelling at Dr. Martin's teaching school. This was the first school she ever attended in the United States. She began classes on Long Day Valentine's Day. From the beginning since February, she has always been motivated, dedicated, and after less than half a year, Policia has demonstrated high academic performance in each and every class she attends. Due to her continuous high academic performance, Policia was accepted again to the Dream Program, but more importantly, she is a world model, an athlete in terms of a personality that excels in everything she's done. She does. She's responsible, respectful, and friendly to all students. And the one thing that is most impressive to me, we had a situation where we did a restorative conference about an issue that happened, and after the restorative conference, she got up and she forgave the students who brought harm to her. So I thought that was remarkable, remarkable. She gave him a hand and said, "I accept your apology." She is the school leader in whatever thing she does. She is always worried about her math grade. Every time I see her, I just know she's up going, "I'm just trying to get that math grade up to about a 90. Until I get to a 90, then I will be all right." So once again, give it up for Policia. At this time, we will introduce our Athlete of the Month for May, Princess Goode. At this time, her teacher wanted to lead a reading. She is a utmost pleasure in teaching and coaching over the last few years. Throughout her time at Asbury Park, she has been dedicated and passionate about sports and education. She is a leader amongst the classmates. She is an integral part of a team's success from here. This year, in middle school sports, she's very disciplined as an athlete, works hard, puts forth good effort, and has self-developed basketball and softball skills. Most importantly, she is a fantastic teammate and a pleasure to be a coach. Princess is talented, a young lady with incredible athletic ability, a great drive for excellence, and her skill set that always put forth the effort needed to be successful. I cannot imagine another spring school athlete receiving the honor of Athlete of the Month. At this time, Princess Goode. Our next staff member, Teacher of the Year, uh, Teacher of the Month for the month of April. This person is, uh, came to the middle school to support the ERi program. She gave everything she had in terms of offering an opportunity for our students to be successful in our middle school. She started with one student, and over the course of several months, I believe there are up to at least 70 students in the class now. She never complains about anything. She's the first one to get to school and the last one to leave. She's an integral part of our Yonder pouch. She's helped us collect some phones each and every day, something that she was not asked to do, but volunteered when we first initiated the Yonder cell phone pouch system. So in terms of a principal, I can't think of a better program to sustain the sustainability of the middle school other than the ERi program. And at this time, I am happy to introduce Ms. Snyder as our Teacher of the Month of April. Our next Staff Member of the Month for May. This person also is, helps with the, our Teacher of the Handicaps, our Teacher of Disabilities, helps with our CSD. Not only does she serve as a lead CSD member here at the middle school, but she is also supports each and every school in the district for writing IEPs, the support in student placements, the revision IEPs, the sit-in on disciplinary, the meetings, et cetera. She has a smile that will light up the room. Also, she is a team player. She's an integral part of my leadership team. She also allows me to make sure our students at the middle school get in a proper placement that they need to be successful. At this time, our Staff Month, our Staff of the Month will be none other than Ms. Patucci.
Now I'd like to call Dr. Peter Dusay.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Trevor Peters, fourth floor. My students and staff cannot make it out tonight between awards and ceremonies and planning for their next steps because I do have upperclassmen being represented. We will honor and celebrate them at our last staff meeting on June 2nd, but I do want to share some notes. Our Athletes of the Month for April and May are actually both Dream Academy students, one of which is a senior who just graduated with his associate's degree. Nestor Castile, who was first team All Division in baseball. He is playing in the Senior All-Star Gang and is going to the University of Connecticut to pursue his academic career. Nestor was also celebrated last night at the National Honor Society induction ceremony in which we celebrated the outgoing members. So he was, he was well-rounded and a deeply rooted in our school community. Next is a junior, Matelson Lucius, who actually last night was inducted into the National Honor Society. So congratulations, Matelson. He's a mental health athlete. Recently, in track, he broke his personal best in javelin and sprinting. And as I mentioned, just like with Nestor, Matelson is a wonderful community member for our school, has a large following, and helps administration and teachers with the closeouts of the day. For Students of the Month for April and for May. For April, it's a senior, Mackay Davis, who's also a vocational student studying culinary and hospitality endeavors. And he's actually working tonight at a restaurant in Long Bridge. I won't divulge that information. I'll keep some of his privacy, but we will celebrate him on June 2nd. And finally, for our May Students of the Month, and actually Students, is our entire Dream 12 class, who, as I mentioned before, just graduated with their associate's degree from Oakdale Community College. For Staff Members of the Month in this one, the entire school community made this a very easy decision. It is a split between four people in respective months. So for April, and each of the So for April, and each of them are part of our Schoolbase program as Schoolbase teams. Victoria LaGrane McMillan, who is our mental health counselor for Schoolbase. Jason Ramirez, who is our youth development specials. And for May, Mr. Disari Santiago, who is our master level intern. And finally, a big shout out to Ms. Beatrice Patino Sherar, who is our program director. Schoolbase has been a big part in our SCL initiatives in supporting student life, particularly during a time that may be somewhat challenging. Their support, not just to the students, but to the staff, have really made the life at Asbury Park High School more enriching. So we'd like to congratulate them again, and we'll be celebrating them on June 2nd. Thank you.
So okay, let's give a shout out to the correct staff and especially our students. And we recognize them. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the students and all the teachers. Your recognition is well deserved. Now would you like to have the superintendent make his report?
Thank you again, and I thank you very much for coming out tonight. Let me report for May 22nd, 2025. The district just completed their state test, and culinary doctor lives has come in. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, the NJGPA for grade 11. ELA, sixty-six percent of the students passed the ELA exam. Nine, nine students scored in the eight hundreds. One student has a perfect score of eight fifty. Matt, ninety percent of the students achieved a passing grade, which is up from twenty-six percent last year. At this time, if you have any questions, staff, or Ms. Medina, please stand and be recognized. I want to thank you for your hard work. Mr. Mr. Rob, absolutely. Thank you very much. And that's why we fight for our staff. Other school tests will not be available. We will get that information until sometime in July or August. Once we receive it, we will report it out to the board. And back to high school, National Honor Society induction. We have eleven inductees into the National Honor Society for next year. And outgoing seniors, there are eight, and all are going to college. An alumnus of ours donated twenty-five thousand dollars to our scholarship fund. This is the first we've had of that fund, and it'll be the first year we're using it. So thank you for the one thousand twenty-five thousand for our students. And this year marks another year of successful Dream graduation, where some of our seniors graduated with a SOCS degree even before finishing their high school diploma graduation. And the monthly student attendance for the high school is eighty-nine percent for the month of May. Bradley Marshall. We have heavily attended spring concert this spring. We had a packed house for our Muggles and Moms and Moms alike events. It was held on May 8th. Hosted the Haitian Flag Day Celebration of the Sixteenth for students and parents. It was fantastic, very, very well attended. TMS teamed up with the ASPCA, the Agri Global Public Library for that pop-up book tape. TMS students have the opportunity to read to Puppies Therapy Buckles. Held last Saturday at Agri for our public library. Good job. Eighty percent, now we get to that, eighty percent, eighty percent of our pre-K students are identifying letters, and forty-six know their letter sound, which has exceeded the state pre-K standards. Yes, that should be recognized. Thank you, Ms. Philhout. Also, the UFLI FODI program, University Flower Literacy Initiative, FODI program is proving to be successful. A significant growth has been shown from Lincoln Form B to Lincoln Form C in kindergarten through seventh grade. Eighty percent, again, eighty percent of all kindergarten students are performing on or above grade level in ELA. That has never happened before. Bradley Elementary attendance for third March of ninety-one, twenty-six percent. Great job. The pre-K moving up ceremony will be held on Thursday, June 12th at eight thirty a.m. Kindergarten moving up ceremony, the ceremony will be held on Friday, June 13th at eight thirty a.m. And this month, and should be noted again, something for early childhood needs to be noted because this is not from us, this is from the state of New Jersey that is talking about our pre-K program, early childhood. At this month's New Jersey Department of Education Early Childhood Meeting, with schools around the state attending, our early childhood department was again recognized a school to watch. For our progressive use of the UFLI Science and Reading Program, again, they reiterated to the audience that we would be a school to watch, and we are ahead of the curve. Yes, I should be noted for applauding. Bradley Elementary School completed three full weeks of the NJSLA testing for grades levels three through four, count in area, ELA math and science, and six, three, four, five, six, I have all of that, not in U7. NJSLA makeup testing completed a record three days, which is incredible. Usually makeup testing takes a week or more. Ninety-seven, ninety percent of the staff were attending during testing. Ninety percent of the staff was there every day for testing. Lincoln and I ready end-of-year event for testing completed for all students, with data which will be reviewed next week. Fourth grade student Elaine Velasco placed second in the Monmouth County Arts Law Day essay. Congratulations. Bradley Elementary is a Gulf Level school recipient for the 2025 State Rivers School Awards. Bike School Day with Easy Ride and Adler Lock, this one will take place May 30th. They hosted their Haitian Heritage Month showcase piece. Research project students working on for a month during testing. Sixth grade student attended the info session for Dream Stars. Fifth and sixth grade students attend MLK Info Session for next year. They completed the PBS on the Health and Wellness Assessment with Rutgers with the NJPVIS program. IFT is creating a literacy, it's a leadership team within schools creating a literacy program for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six. They hosted their Mother's Day afternoon team with high turnout and parents' families. The moving up ceremony for fifth and sixth grade are planned for June 10th. Student attendance for Bradley Elementary is at ninety-three percent for May. Rightly. MLK, recent Lincoln Science Assessment data shows that we know our science scores have been low historically for years. Recent Lincoln Science Assessment, which correlates to the NJSLA Science Assessment, shows a seventy percent increase in student proficiency. Seventy percent revealed something right. Tutoring and experimental learning, such as the Monmouth County Park System Field Trip, have reinforced key contents for your visual academic growth. Suspensions went from thirty-six percent down to fourteen percent. Chronic African nationalism has dropped to twenty percent to seventeen percent. The state averages fourteen percent. Student attendance at MLK is ninety-four point seven percent. I want to thank everyone for a job well done. This is why we fight for our staff and our students. And I thank everybody for passing the vote for next year so we get these phenomenal staff members. Thank you.
Ms. Medina, could you just repeat the math high school score you said? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, the math high school, they were twenty-six percent. This year they are forty percent.
What is it forty?
Forty, four zero.
What was it?
Twenty-six percent.
The one comment I do want to make with the whole performance reports, I did look at the website, and it's out for, these are the twenty-three, twenty-four performance reports. And you know, you look at some of the total scores, I don't look at that so much. I want to see the growth of the students. And the growth of the students were really extraordinary for that school year. And I want to thank all the staff members that were here or are here now, that worked hard over the last few years to bring up those performance tests. And I think it's a compliment to the fidelity of the teaching staff and accountability of the students, the staff, and everybody that's involved. And this is being done with thirty-eight million dollars in less people. Well, a balance. So we're doing more with less. And I think that's a shout out to everybody that's working really very hard for our kids. And I want to thank everybody for that. Do you want to go to the monitor's report?
There will be it. As you know, I am retiring on June 30th. But I have a new state prosecutor who is being appointed June 1st. There's maybe a month overlap, and I just don't know if the board was aware of this yet, but I'm saying this tonight.
Ms. Glassman, will we join in an executive session so we can discuss my thoughts on the agenda? Okay, let's just, let's just. We can do that in the committees before we go into exec. So why? Sorry, do the committee reports first. Athletics? Ms. Ricks?
Mr. Allen is the head of the athletics committee. Tracy is the head of the athletics committee.
Yes, he's right. Is there somebody else on the committee that would like to report?
I did just report quickly that I had, it was just me. I had a quick call with Mr. Allen regarding just updates on the hiring. And he spoke with NAS, NAS.
Timberwolves?
Timberwolves Athletics, yeah. He spoke with his team, and they're waiting until the playoffs are done before he provides new artwork. But they were fine with it. And that was about it. They're wrapping up the spring sports, and things are going very well. That was about it.
Mr. Pennett, curriculum?
It was just me. And in the meeting, we talked about special education, ESY, a program for the, as I said, the school year. IXL, the learning program that we do this year, which is excellent. Atlas Curriculum Management Renewal, Lincoln Assessments Software Renewal. We talked about beyond the classroom support curriculum. We talked about the referred behavioral health of New Jersey, and the great school trips that are happening at the end of the school year.
Can I, I had a couple of questions that I emailed about the school trips. I didn't get a response, so I just. Are they walking? That's what the concern is about walking. This wasn't.
Yeah, no, they're all bussed. They're all, they're busted. She did respond. I don't know why the microphone's not working. She did respond. I'll send it, I'll try to send it again.
Yeah, because I didn't see a cost, a cost for transportation. That's why I asked.
Yeah. But they will be busted.
Okay.
I'll find it, I'll print it.
Policy?
I have one question on curriculum.
Yes.
The, the Atlas curriculum renewal, I don't think I was here. Do we have data on the usage, usage of Atlas? And the personalized, we're able to provide personalized online instruction? Is there info where you can talk to me later about how students were actually involved here in our plan?
So let me explain two different ones. So Atlas is our curriculum warehouse, I guess is the way to say it. It's approved by the state. We like to use it because it's a lot easier to house our curriculum in the Atlas platform. It's used throughout New Jersey. And so basically, what we love about the platform is that it's constantly being updated to the New Jersey state standards, and it's a very easy way, or we do Q-SAC, for the state to look at our curriculum very quickly and make sure that every part of the curriculum is covered, including Alastad, any, they were LGBTQ, all of those things are included in there. So that's the platform for that. As far as the personalized learning programs, there's two programs, IXL and I Ready. We can definitely provide data. We're finalizing, I think most of the schools have already taken the last diagnostic. Within the next week or so, we'll probably get our reports. We'd be happy to share that information with you. Absolutely. My pleasure.
And IXL is a continuation of the program?
Yeah, so IXL, so I Ready runs K to eight. They don't have a high school, otherwise I would have kept it consistent. IXL, our high school personalized learning, they're very similar in that way. And then we added a science component to IXL to help support science. Because as you know, as Ms. Medina was just talking about, looking at science and how we've done in the past, this is going to help us kind of continue to push our science scores. And that'll go across all grade levels too. I think Barbara likes science. That one's going to work across all grade levels. That's, I'm excited about that because we haven't had that. And we're trying to copy the model that we're using in our ELA math programs so that kids have different centers and they're able to do science in the same way that we kind of structured the math and language arts programs. So that's coming for next year, guys. Be ready. Thank you.
Any other questions for curriculum?
Hold on, this guy just forwarded you to email that museum on May 14th regarding bus.
Okay, I'll take a look. Thank you. Policy?
The policy may not meet. Nothing to discuss.
Buildings and grounds?
May I, the Yonder Saks, there's still no policy or regulation on that. And I noticed on Instagram, there may be some children that didn't return them or, and I'm not sure how the administration's going to handle if there's any discipline because there is no policy or regulation approved by the board. I mentioned that a few months ago, and I just want to bring it to your attention again.
Ms. Jackson Meyer says she'll look into it, and she will follow up.
Okay. Buildings and grounds? Buildings and grounds will be met May 15th at 6:00 p.m. It was me, Ms. Glassman, Mr. Adaraka, and Mr. Rogers. There were a couple of use of facilities requests, fee waiver requests. One was from the Asbury Park Music Foundation to use the high school athletic field for charity softball game. And there was a twelve-hundred-dollar custodial and room area fee for that. And then they have a non-refundable commitment fee of ten dollars. The City of Asbury Park had requested Thurgood Marshall for housing students. Bradley Elementary, the soccer field for soccer games. And this is all from recreational, so. MLK, auditorium, gymnasium, cafeteria, athletic field, and three classrooms for summer camp, total of twenty-one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And Asbury Park High School for track and field, eighteen hundred dollars room and area fees. Because City of Asbury Park is a, was a Class A or Class One, we're obligated. Because City of Asbury Park is a, was a class A or class one, we're obligated to, to waive those fees. And then the final request was the mega class reunion. The Asbury Park High School Auditorium, Stage, Gymnasium for a class reunion of multiple years. And then, was it, was it a decade? Yeah. And then the athletic field for the Adult Field Day, which is actually a philanthropic event where the money goes to the kids. Two scholarships. And that concludes our report.
Mr. Grill, have you any discussions about the stadium? I know that. Anyone else?
I'll report on the finance. Finance committee also met last Thursday and we went over the error in the presentation of the tax effect of the budget that we passed. The monitor went through the papers and where the error arose. And we want to just make the point that in knowing did affect the actual budget numbers and those calculations were all correct. It just reflects the error in the start year of the calculation showing year over year the effect of the levy. But again, the amount of this budget, as the monitor confirmed to us, was the minimum that was required to provide a thorough and efficient education to our students. Sorry, we also looked at a business plan for the I T C center. And again, it's deficient. And we asked Mrs. Brown to go back to the I T C manager and prepare a more robust plan and make certain that it includes all expenses and all anticipated revenues and justification for each of those. We also, again, asked for a better explanation of the cyber insurance.
Mrs. Glassman? Mrs. Glassman, it's part of the executive session discussion. That's what that was, both of those items. Not both of them. And I haven't seen the report from the I T C either. But those are executive session discussions. The other. Discussing executives.
And the cybersecurity?
No, 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 no. No, no, no.
Well, anyway, I'm finished with that. And the other issue is cybersecurity coverage, which we have asked for a written summary from our insurance broker.
Can we have, can the board have both of those items, please? So we can discuss an executive session at the time.
I'm curious why the I T C business plan would be something for executive session?
We discussed it in executive session. It was not made public what the discussion was. And I can talk to you later about why we decided it was an executive session, not in public.
Just one more question. Will we get the slide corrected that's on our website with regard to the tax impact? So that we're not, we, we, tax driving. Excuse me, but I believe I gave you a copy of the slide. It's on the website, okay?
Get a motion to approve the committee reports?
Do we report on personnel? Is there a personnel?
We, personnel, really quick, went over the appointments to the summer staff. So we, we went through those fairly quickly and we did speak about one personnel position that was being abolished. That had to do with the I T C. And if you notice in, in your, in your packet, it does, I'm sorry. There's a reappointment list, so our handy dandy annual reappointment list where you can go through and vote for the whole thing, or if there's specific numbers employed on the left-hand side, say no, or whatever you like to.
When we get to that, as far as the agenda, we're going to need to make one correction to that list. How can we get a motion to approve the committee reports? On the H1B report?
Good evening, everyone. We just had two incidents during the month of April. One was founded, one was unfounded. The student daddy was founded. They made sure that counseling was given to that student and the parents weren't notified. That's it.
Can we, can we?
And public participation now. In accordance with Board Policy D167, oh, six seven, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not to question a question and answer session and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President or me as the Presiding Officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the Presiding Officer and write his or her name, municipality of residence, group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the Presiding Officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Good evening. My name is Julie Andreaolo-Gorillo. I want to make it clear that while I do serve on a number of boards and committees, I'm appearing today as an individual, a parent, and a taxpayer. I have notes. I can't express enough, Ms. Glassman, how thrilled I was today at the ECIC, the Early Childhood Advisory Council meeting, to hear the amazing news that 80% of our kindergartners are reading at grade level. As a parent of a young child, that gives me a lot of hope. I also wanted to congratulate the Early Childhood Education Department. I know half of them just stepped out into the hallway. The amount of work they've done this year to engage parents of young children, regardless of levels of literacy or the parent proficiency in English. The Early Childhood Education Department is making it possible for every parent to participate in the joy of teaching your own child to read. And again, as a parent of a young child, I can't express, I mean, I'm comfortable with my literacy level and I can learn stuff at these meetings. So that said, today in the meeting was discussed that they're looking for more opportunities for parent engagement. So, Ms. Glassman, if any members of the community are hosting family-focused events that have vendor tables, where the Early Childhood Education Department, or the ECIC, I guess, can be present, you could contact Jocelyn in their office. Some of the types of events we discussed where it would be helpful to have them present are the Juneteenth event in Springfield Park. And Ms. Diane Shelton also brought up the weekly barbecues that are hosted by the Asbury Park Housing Authority. So if anyone is aware of events like those that ECIC can participate, please let Jocelyn in the Early Education, Early Childhood Education Department know. And that's all I got. Thank you. And congratulations to everyone who just went out in the hallway. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nina Sumon, I reside 11th and 1st day. Julie, just so you know, pasty homage to Juneteenth. They're taking applications now. I'd like to say to the board, I'm really concerned because last month, I saw this on the agenda and I see it again tonight for the food service management. I don't know if any of these board members have ever been in our school district and been in this cafeteria when these kids are getting provided these lunches. Our children do not eat this food. It goes in the trash. This is a lot of money that we're paying a food service to feed our children and our children are not eating the meals. So I recommend that you guys really reconsider about again putting this company on this board agenda and nobody's been out to see what these kids have been eating. Nobody's questioned these kids about food. Nobody has said anything to any of these children about what they're eating and why they're eating and they're not eating half the stuff. Because I've done a lot of after-school programs and I spent my own money and leave from Steen Park to test to this. We've spent money to feed these kids after school. These kids are hungry at 2:30 because they're not eating lunch. That's not fair to our children. And this is a lot of money to be paying a food service that our kids don't touch the food. So you guys might really want to reconsider and start looking into better food service for these kids or start doing a survey with the company that you have now in regards to getting better food. Because I know, as long as I've been coming to these board meetings, board members eat better than our children do. And you can't say you don't. Because food that you guys get, our kids will never see. These kids are throwing this food in the trash on a regular basis and this is a lot of money. We're talking about cutting staff members. Why are we not getting rid of this food service company? That'll save you a million dollars right there. So I suggest, while we're looking at this agenda, we reconsider the things that are on this agenda every month that are making no sense. And not one board member has actually went to the school and sat with these kids and had lunch to see what they're throwing in the trash. Our kids are eating processed food again, another year, and nobody's doing anything about it. And we're paying a million dollars for our kids to eat like this. That's not fair. Thank you.
Good evening, she lives there, 1200 Jefferson Street. I was going to talk about the same thing, food service management, for not contest about food, but I used to be a board if we got the food. I impressed the candidate, you tell, I got all the press. So, but it's not fair to our kids. What we need to think about doing is bringing back in-house. The staff that used to cook at Thurgood Marshall, the middle school, high school, bringing those people back and bringing in-house, that we, again, you don't have to pay them nothing for insurance, but paying somebody $1.5 million and the food is nasty, I wouldn't even eat it. I would, I would have a dog, but if I did, I would not give it to my dog. That's what I'm saying. So, but that's the way they treat our Asbury Park kids. And another thing is, I was going to ask about when we're going to do the mural for Nas B, but you are, I said, I was going to ask about the mural for Nas. So that was one of my questions. So I was going to ask why it took so long, but I know he got a game tonight, 8 o'clock, so we need to get on out of here, okay? But, so I'm glad we're working on that, so to get that done and, you know, because although he didn't graduate high school here, but he went here for eight years, elementary, middle school. Once you bond at Asbury Park, I want to go here, but I am black and blue all day long. So, you know, I'm 40 years in here, so, but, you know, Alabama, I want to be home, but New Jersey, second home. But I'm glad we got this today, but really, think about bringing that food service back in-house. Look, I volunteer to cook, you'll be working, you only have to pay our volunteer. Okay? Thank you. Have a good night. God bless.
Anyone else? We can close public participation? Can I get a motion to close public participation?
So who?
Can we get a motion to go into executive session?
And who will be going to executive session?
Second.
Ms. Eckman? Yes. Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grill?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca?
Yes.
Ms. Zizinski?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to reopen the meeting, please?
I'll move to reopen.
Second.
Who will start? Who will start? Mark, Mark, and then Ms. Eckman. Ms. Eckman?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yeah.
Mr. Grill?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca?
Yes.
Ms. Zizinski?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Rick? Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Tracy on the phone?
Yes. Mark, yeah, he just muted.
Is he voting or not?
He said his batteries are running low, please start naming.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move the motion to the second. I thank you. I have two corrections. The regular meeting minutes, item B1B, I abstain.
B1B?
Yes, item B1B, I abstain. And, I'm waiting. And then one more item. Items B4A and B, I will also abstain. Next.
And I, there's a correction as well. I mean, I didn't vote nay on paying utilities, I had a C, point 1A, I abstained.
C1?
C1A, where it says, on page 17 of the minutes. It was written down, it says, upon roll call, motion was adopted with Mr. Grill voting nay, C1A utilities, but it wasn't a nay, I abstained.
Yeah, G1A.
Yeah. E.
So this is a motion to accept the minutes, there's the three directions. Ms. Eckman?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Brille?
Yes.
Ms. LaRaca?
Yes.
Ms. Zensky?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Rick?
Yes.
Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Can I get a motion on the minutes for the closed executive session?
Well, my, I think my, my motion was for the minutes, period, not eight, I did separate.
Fine.
Page calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And I just wanted to ask what the change was because I can't figure it out.
It was the Jewish holiday.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Eckman?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Brille?
Yes.
Ms. LaRaca?
Yes.
Ms. Zensky?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts? He can hear, but he can't see. You want me to call?
Yeah, call.
Can you hear us? Okay, we're going to have you on the, we're going to have you on the speakerphone instead. Oh, okay. All right, we'll have, we'll go fast.
When is the vote?
Vote on the calendar. Thank you.
Can I get consent agenda for B1 through B9?
Move it. Second.
Ms. Eckman?
For you to vote, we talked about changing that item for Tron Goldfarb. We say that changes publicly.
B6, number 11.
Tron Goldfarb will be appointed as the assistant supervisor for buildings and grounds for the 25-26 school year at a salary of $109,044. In addition, Tron Goldfarb will be added to be appointed as the interim supervisor of buildings and grounds effective July 1 through June 30, 2026, or until such time as a permanent placement is appointed, whichever occurs first, at a salary of $130,000.
I'll move it. No, it's just a change. It's to do with the set agendas. Okay.
Here's my question. Good? Ms. Eckman?
Yes, yeses to B1, page B1 through page B5. On B6, yeses to 8 and 9, oh, sorry, no.
What page?
Sorry, up to B6. And abstaining starts with number 8. Abstaining for 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. Yeses to 13, 14, 15. And abstain, 16 through 19. Abstain is to 20. Yeses to 21 and 22. Yes to B1 through B5, 13, 14, 15, 21, 22. B6 abstaining 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 16 to 19 and 20. Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, abstaining as to 10 and 11A.
Ms. Zensky?
I'm going to tell you where I'm going to vote, yes or no, that's it. Because I'm still having a hard time digesting budget impact. I'll tell you, B1, I'm going to abstain, 2, B2, 3.
Wait, I'm sorry.
B1, 2, and 3, I'm going to abstain right now.
Abstained B1 through 3?
Yes, ma'am. And B4, when you're ready?
Abstained yes to B4?
Yes to I, J, K. And number 2, I'm abstaining from 3 and 4.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was slow. Yes on I. It's B4.
Yes to B4, I?
I.
Got it.
J.
K.
K, number 2. I'm going to abstain from number 3 and 4.
I'm sorry, what about B4, number 2?
I said yes. Sorry.
B4, 3, no.
No, I'm abstaining. I didn't vote no, I'm abstaining. With explanation. The next page, I guess B5, I believe it is now, because I had some, there were some added coaches there, I didn't have all this. Number 5, yes.
With B5, 4A, B.
B5, 5, yeah, 5A and B. 6.
4A and B.
That's abstention. The transfers and reassignments, abstention. Now I guess we're on B5.
B5, 5A and B.
Yes, that's a yes. Number 6, a yes. 7, yes. 8, abstain. And then I think we're on the next page.
Retirement, 9A.
9, yes. Reduction in force, abstain. 11 reappointments, yes. B, yes, also A and B. C, yes, D and E, yes. And then continue on F and G, yes. Abstain, H, I, yes on J. 12, yes. 13 and 14, yes. And I think we're on 8 now, I believe. Abstain on 15 and then 16, 17, and 20 are yes.
16 to 20 are yes?
Yes, and then, oh, also 19 is a yes, sorry. And then the last two are also yes, 20 and 22.
Ms. Black, Ms. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Rick?
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself from anything that has to do with the wards or the general ward. First, I'm starting with page on page B3, I'm recusing myself from the head bowling
I'm sorry, recuse.
That's.
The bowling coach.
Yes, bowling coach, ward.
Okay.
Okay, I am abstaining from the 25-26 school year staff reassignment and transfers, I'm abstaining. I'm also abstaining on D.
I'm sorry, can you just give me the page number and the number?
The page number is B5, 1A and B, and I'm abstaining.
Thank you.
Same page, B5, number 6, I am abstaining. B6, number 8, A, I'm voting no. Number 10, on the same page, B6, I'm voting no. On the reappointment list, number 11, I am recusing myself from the ward and ward Jones. And I think I might have to recuse myself from Mr. Javina. I think.
I think it's off, isn't it, or? That was updated.
Oh, it was an updated one?
There is an updated.
Okay, well, I recuse myself from the wards and ward Jones. I'm, page B7, E, I'm recusing myself. B7, I, I am abstaining. B7, number 12, I am abstaining. And that's it.
Yes to everything else? And yes to everything else?
Yes, everything else, thank you.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Hello? Oh, good, okay, it's your turn to vote on. Yeah. Okay. Yep? Yes to everything except anything dealing with Jessica Teague.
Item consent agenda for C1 and C6? On the attachment for C6? The price list should be 25-26 school year, not 24-25. Those are the snack prices, the L bar prices, those are, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you what you said. The attachment for C6, it says 24-25 school year, but it should be 25-26, like the extra food, the little snacks that it gives the adult. For Sedexo, C6? The size of snacks and beverages? It just says 24-25, it should be 25-26.
I have 24-26 on that.
You do?
So do I. I have, I have before all the names were added.
What question?
We got a motion. Motion to.
I'll second.
I'm, I'm the Sedexo, and it might be lost, that attachment, but was there follow-up from the last meeting where that, that came up and now some people are still bringing it up? What's the feedback on Sedexo?
Not aware that it's coming from, but the principals are satisfied, they're happy with the results that they're getting from Sedexo. Every time there's a complaint, they're quick to respond to it. This year, we have had very little complaints. Dr. Schultz is our number one principal that is quick to call me, text me, Ms. Johnson is affirmative to that. And this year, they have a good relationship with the general manager, Ms. Walker. They did a survey on December, I can do another one before the end of the school year. We, they're listening to the kids. As far as what they're throwing out, I don't know. But all four principals are happy with the services that they're receiving this year. And in the past, too. They're quick to listen to the kids. One thing that the kids did say that they would want to have more meetings, you know.
More what?
More meetings, how we used to have like meetings with the principal, the superintendent, myself, and the general manager, just, and they just talk about ideas, concerns, you know, what can they bring back, or can we have more this and less of that? I noticed them gradually when I did a walk-through, they're getting the salads, they're asking for more salads, which is good.
Yeah, they're getting salads?
They are getting more salads, yes.
Okay. All right, so. I just had a question on the professional development. Couple of them were a little high in price, are they out of state, and where are they? I think it was, is it the model schools or something? I'm not sure. And I said in the last meeting that we had stopped sending anybody out of state because of our fiscal issue. And we had curtailed a lot of the.
That's PEA funds, that's not district funds. When you're talking about out of state, that's not.
Well, we have been working sending people a whole lot of state for the law training, for conferences, it was in their, their contracts, you know. It's number 14, I don't have the list, the list should be in your tax. And we had gone to model schools since 3 superintendents ago.
2018 or 2019?
Yeah, 2018 or 19. And we are not dealing with, is a model school HMH? HMH, just again, like I said last time, HMH is the sponsor of the program, it's not HMH, it's not HMH out of Washington. Right, but we don't, we haven't thought of model schools back then. All I did was ask where it was. It was in DC.
It's Washington. Washington DC.
Washington DC.
Go for the question?
Uh, no, sorry. On C2, changes to the budget? It looks like it nets out to zero, is it just moving them, moving the monies from different categories? I know there's explanations, but is that the general explanation?
I know there's explanations, but is that the general explanation? C2, what number? C2 on page C1, sorry, page C1, item 2, the attachment C2.
The training, trainers.
Yes. What's that? It shouldn't be. It's a zero. Okay, and it's just moving, you're just, it's just changing categories, right, question? They're up there? Okay. And then, I just had a follow-up on the computers on page C2, item 7. I know we clarified that it's actually purchasing. So I had a couple of follow-up questions. So the first was, we, what, how do these fit into the master plan in terms of equipment purchased and monitored, you know, how to, tracking it? What's gonna happen to the computers we're getting rid of? And then the third piece is, is it, do we price out the possibility of refurbishing these 63 instead of buying brand new ones around the house? I don't think, yeah, we can't refurbish them. Okay, that's fine. The ones that are, you have to approve that disposal opinion.
Unfortunately, they, they're so, they, yeah.
That's fine, you have, yeah, so do we have a master, like, do we have a master plan?
So what happens is, we have, every, every few years, computers have to be updated.
Are you saying, are you saying, do we keep a list of all of our? We tag everything. They're tagged, do we have, and overall, so do we have like a five-year plan set, right? Because we know that the computers get outdated. Oh, Mr. Cancel has a program for that, and he has, every piece of equipment is tagged, so if it moves, he knows where to move still. Yeah, no, I get that, I'm saying in terms of.
Budget wise.
Budget wise, right? Planning for the budget. Do we have, do we earmark money for these computers like 3 years ago? When this is gonna change? Yes, Mr. Cancel is good about that. He knows when something is about to, and this is when we need to refurbish, or this is when we need to extend it, or get rid of, but he, he's pretty good about that. If you say, yes. Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Glassman, is that Mr. Rogers' phone right here? I hear somebody talking, it's distracting.
Do you want him to vote first because his phone is on? Do you want me to go down?
Can he go first?
Yeah.
Tracy, they're gonna, they're gonna call you to vote first so that you don't have to stay on the phone for.
We don't have to hear you.
For C.
And Mr. Rogers? She called you?
Yes, yes, they were.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna let you go, Tracy, thanks, bye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Yep. I'm abstaining as to 1. Page C1, uh, page C1, item 1, abstain. Number 2, I vote no. 3, I abstain. 4, I vote yes, with the caveat that if it's not standard procedure for the district to pay for us to attend these conferences, I have absolutely no problem paying out of my own pocket. I just was unable to register on my own, which is why I requested the registration.
You're abstaining from board?
I'll say, I'm voting yes, I mean, I wanna go, so, but I'm saying if it's not standard procedure for the board to pay.
I think you would have to abstain.
Abstain?
Okay.
Well, it's not going in my pocket, it's going to the SBA. It's for my benefit.
It's for your benefit.
Okay, and I abstain on 4, with the caveat that I just gave. The C1, number 3, was that a yes or no?
Uh, please, that's just your certification, right?
Yeah. On 5 and 6, yes. 7, abstain. Sorry, I had a question on 8. This is just voting to make the amendment, it's not a vote on the actual amendment, right? Because we haven't seen that yet? Okay. Yes on 8. Yes on 9 and 10. Oh, no, sorry, no, 10 is no.
You said no to number 10?
Yeah. And my note on that is that I don't think we should have to pay for the mediation on property, because we sold as is. And then abstain as to, no, sorry, it's fine. Yes as to 11. 12 is yes. 13 is yes. 14 is abstain. And that's it. 15, you already did, right? Isn't that to go into executive? Thank you.
Ms. Slar?
Yes.
Ms. Brilla?
Yes, abstain on, we can't, it's 2, 2.
Ms. LaRocca?
Yes, no on 10, is we can sell the building as is, and no on 14, it could involve any out-of-state travel.
Anyone abstain, Travis? Ms. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Tensky?
On the first page, yes on everything except for consultants. We're no on paying consultants. Page C2, yes on everything. C3, yes on everything. C4, yes. C5, yes, except for out-of-state travel. That's a no.
Ms. Rick?
C1, item 1, A, I'm voting no on the contract. Number 2 on C1, I abstaining. Number 3 on C1, I abstaining. Number 6 on C2 is no. Number 7 on C2 is no. Number 10 on C3, I abstain. And all else, oh, I'm sorry, number 14, I abstain. All else is yes.
Ms. Last one?
Yes, as to everything except on principle, no, as to C1, 1A, college, any payments to college chief. And abstain from C4, 11A.
Yes to everything except C1, dating is to college chief, and C4, abstain.
11, I abstain.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?